One second. Go ahead, Mr. Presley.
Can I call it to order?
Please.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seat. A couple of quick announcements. Two members are not in right now, but are planning to join soon when they get onboard. Actually, we have Mrs. Rajat. She's now joined. Mr. Gilbert will be joining as soon as he can break away from another meeting. So we'd like to remind everybody, this is a live stream meeting. The link is in, has posted on the agenda that has been out for the last two days. This is pursuant to Executive Order 202.1. The key point on this is that if anybody out there participating would like to make comments to boe@shenschools.org, they can be shared with the superintendent during the meeting and answered accordingly. So that is a significant change. Hopefully, the public, if they want to, can bring forward some questions as they come up. Can I have a motion to adopt an agenda? Any board members?
I make a motion.
I make a motion.
Mrs. Stevenson makes a motion, and I heard Mrs. Miller. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Do we have any nays? No nays, therefore passes. So we'll continue with our agenda. Let's start off with Board of Education comments and reports. And around the table, we'll start off with Grace. Any comments from the student perspective, Grace?
Not much, mainly just because right now, when, you know, because school's been canceled and since then, it's just been kind of just a lot of disappointment from a lot of people, just because I know everyone wanted to go back and, you know, have that experience for the seniors. So, you know, my heart goes out to everyone who was affected and also to all the seniors out there. But that's about it.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller, any comments?
Yep. I just want to once again acknowledge and thank Dr. Robinson, Dr. Wood, all the teachers for going above and beyond. It's fitting this meeting falls during Teacher Appreciation Week. You're all very much appreciated, especially now. I also want to recognize Mr. Agostinoni and his administration, who's figuring out ways to give our seniors their special recognition by upholding some old traditions and creating some new ones. And lastly, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. This new world we're living in can absolutely cause some confusing feelings and difficult emotions. I encourage those struggling to reach out to whomever you feel comfortable talking with, there's no need for anyone to be alone, especially now.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoffman, any comments?
Yes. Typically, we give updates on our, give updates for the committees that we're on. And yes, there were committee meetings with IPAC and with policy. But I also, we had a partnership meeting with Arenda. And one of the things I just wanted to share is, one of the topics is fifth grade moving up and senior recognition ceremonies. They are, they are working towards that. And there were many questions that came out of that. And so I'm hoping that guidance will be provided to all the schools. Lots of really good stuff has been coming out this week, so I'm not minimizing that, just sharing what, what came out of the last partnership meeting. I also wanted to recognize a group that, a middle school group that is taking on a project that's actually making a difference. Right now, they, it's a group with the effort of Mr. Mink. He's our Gowana tech teacher and two, a few students from the middle schools, one from Acadia, one from Coda, and parents. They're working with the Adirondack Mountain Rescue Group. It's a nonprofit group that's coordinating operators of 3D printers to make face shields for healthcare workers and first responders. The students are Austin Zhang, and he's from Acadia, and Gabe West, Gabe is from Coda. There's some parents that have jumped in to help on this project. Bill Waters, Damian West, and Alex Zhang. Those three parents are also working with this. Austin is the one that reached out first. And with his, his request, I reached out to Mrs. Barra, and I very much appreciate Mrs. Barra coordinating this effort, bringing up, bringing Mr. Mink into the picture. So they're all working together. They've, but when Austin came to the group, he brought 15 fully completed shields that he had taken to Ellis Hospital. And now they're getting close, as their group has grown, to 100 shields. That's just this, this small little Shen group with Mr. Mink at the lead. And they're hoping to have that in, I think, to Ellis by the end of the week. But then the larger group, this Adirondack Mountain Rescue, I want to say it was on April 30th, they, they were up to 2,000 of these. And the, the demand is still great. So it's very exciting to see our, our, our students, our teachers, our community coming together and doing something that, that, that is really making a difference. And of course, I would be remiss not to also recognize that this is Teacher Appreciation Week. I think it's very important to recognize the hard work undertaken by our teachers. Back on Friday, March 13th, we announced that our school doors would close, and teachers were asked to make an abrupt shift to remote instruction. And our administrators also had to make a quick shift too, to make sure that the technology was in place and that plans were in place, websites were updated. They, at the same time, trying to meet a social, emotional needs of our students. And this, during a very uncertain time, this has never happened in recent history. And so this is all fresh ground, new territory. Their new reality kicked in on Monday, March 16th. And that was eight Mondays ago. It's, it's really incredible to think of how much time has already passed. But boy, have they stepped up to the challenge. I see our teachers on Twitter and Facebook posting videos and getting words of encouragement out. We also see links on Shen's website so that others can, can get on there and watch. They've, they've retrofitted their lessons. They've reinvented their lessons. And what I'm saying certainly doesn't do them justice. And it certainly isn't, it's just a drop in the bucket as to what they've stepped up to do. And so I feel it's just very important to say that I, or rather, we deeply appreciate all that our teachers do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoffman. Mrs. Rajat, any comments from you?
Sure. It's always a hard act to follow both Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Hoffman. And many a times, now, Dr. Robinson, you hate to hear this, but we all think alike, those, the three of us. So sorry about that. But just to, he's smiling, I see that. Just to reiterate again, Teacher Appreciation Week. And that goes beyond just our teachers to all of our employees at Shen, our family at Shen. Again, I can't say it any more beautifully than Mrs. Miller or Mrs. Hoffman, but just wanted to extend my personal gratitude to everyone that's involved with this. It's such a difficult time, but yet, you know, we've taken this new norm and really have shown the way and led the way, I think, and set a great example for many other school districts as well. Also, as Mrs. Miller pointed out, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And, you know, just dealing with anxiety on a normal day, let alone the heightened anxiety and stress associated with kids being home. You know, for our students alone, dealing with that new norm, for our seniors, who, you know, many of the wonderful memories that they create at the end of the year, that has been changed due to this, providing them that supports to, just everyone worried about jobs and financial security and food security and all that. Just to remind everyone to be there for each other in any way that we can. And the isolation for, for some of our students, always being aware, you know, making sure at any time that we have any concerns for any of our students, whether they have special needs or just, again, the extra anxiety that we're there from the mental health perspective as, as we have been. But especially when we're looking at suicide, you know, as something that could be unfortunately, if the post or residual effect of this COVID-19, just, you know, to, on a, if you want to say, on a personal guilt, I guess, to share. Just to share with you, as you all know, I work at Equinox, and we're doing a virtual wellness series every Thursday at 4:30 and also recording them throughout the month of, of May. But it's great. It's for the community. You know, meditation to beginner's yoga to good eats, healthy eating demonstrations, all kinds of things. So just to shout that out, just for anyone that just needs a break and just want to understand, you know, how to have that break from all this. So just, they can go to equinoxing.org. Again, I'm sorry that that's such a bad, bad, maybe routine to do a plug in there. But again, it's more about the mental health and awareness. So, and that's really about it.
Thank you. I assume Mr. Gilbert is not on yet. In that case, we'll go to Mr. Delalo. Do you have any comments, Gary?
Yes. Some of them are falling under a general heading as opposed to things that are specific. As most of us were confined to our homes and given me an opportunity to observe, you know, what's going on in terms of the governmental actions and so forth. I really greatly appreciate the care and thoroughness that our governor has, has exercised in going forward. Initially, I was a little critical that he had not gone ahead and declared the obvious that was, that schools were going to have to be closed through the end of the year. But he has laid out a very careful path for returning. And here I am also grateful that he's put us on the fourth level. That is, we have to go through two or three other steps before we ever consider going back to school. I think he is putting the emphasis in the right place. I know there's a great deal, even a continuum, a tension between the economic needs of people, which are real, and health needs of people. And initially, there was no debate. It was all about health and safety and lives. Now, with people suffering economic pain, it's shifted a little bit more. And realistically, I would say that probably the discussion now is more, how much can we tolerate in terms of loss of life rather than protecting every life? As far as I'm concerned, our governor has come down very strongly in favor of the sanctity of all life. And I for one would never be willing to support any action without involving schools that would not do the very utmost to protect the, the safety of our students. I know parents certainly have the right to determine whether they feel their own students are safe. And this was kind of illustrated indirectly in what happened in Texas today. They declared segments of the economy open, restaurants and so forth, and nobody showed up. So, you know, people are aware of the dangers, and even though they have the opportunities, in many instances, they err on the side of, side of safety and they stay home. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delalo. And now, Mrs. Stevenson.
Yeah. First of all, I'm going to take Gusta up on her invitation to call her for some mental health. I'm feeling in.
I'm available whenever you need me.
You're the best. Thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know, and I think you've seen that in the media recently. I know Channel 10 ran one, a little plug. I thank you, Kelly, that posted. And I, I had the distinct privilege of getting to work with Ron Agostinoni over the past week with, for our seniors. And the Shenandoah Education Foundation, in partnership with Moving Ads, Moving Ads, Rob Potter owns Moving Ads, and his wife, Mary Potter, is a sixth grade teacher over at Acadia. And together, he came up, well, he came up with the first prototype of the sign for the seniors and wanting to donate signs for our seniors this year. So the foundation got behind it. And the foundation, in working with Rob and Ron and the class officers and advisors, it was really great. The, the officers actually took the sign and they redid it a little bit. And I thought that was great that they had a say in that. And Rob took the sign, and we will be distributing, we're starting with 500 signs for every senior. We have pickup times for that. Ron is, Ron is scheduling that and getting that together on top of everything else he has to do. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. I know I've seen on Facebook a lot, a lot of traffic about, you know, what are we doing for our seniors? Are we going to have signs? People going and paying a lot of money to put pictures on them and whatnot. So I'm here to say that the least we could do at this point, the foundation is assisting. And I just want to thank Ron, and I want to thank Rob Potter. I want to thank the foundation. And thanks, Dr. Robinson, for helping move it along as well. So thanks so much. And so, you know, least we could do for our awesome senior class.
Thank you. First, I want to thank, thank all the board members. I think all of you had excellent comments. I think they covered a wide range of things. And you definitely did a great job conveying your perspective and your approach to that topic. From my perspective, I would say this last week was, was a very difficult week because we finally had to announce that graduation was not going to happen the way that some had hoped. We kept hope as much as we could. But I think we all need to realize that, you know, eight weeks ago, we were looking at a very grave health crisis, and it looked like it was uncontrollable, and it looked like it was going to hit our community, and things had to stop. And that was the overriding thing. Mr. Delalo pointed out how the importance is for student safety, that we need to take that approach, and that needs to remain a priority. So thank you for doing that. I, I think this is a time where we need to realize the importance of continuing to push forward. It's difficult when you have to explain to somebody the bad news. And I think everybody has done that. We, I read some recent examples of how parents did that. And I was very heartened to see that there's that level of attention and care brought forward. Tonight's meeting is how we're going to push things forward. As you'll see, it involves a planning process around things that we really don't know where our funding is going to land. We don't know where the rules in terms of managing the classrooms are going to land, and the public health rules haven't been figured out as to where we're going to land late August and early September. And so the best we can do is to take a broad approach around some key planning principles. And I think Dr. Robinson will convey them. And, and make sure that we have multiple scenarios thought through, started, so that when we finally figure out where we're going to land on this in, you know, late August, early September, we've done all the, the early thinking. And I think that's a key point that needs to be done, needs to be mentioned on a planning process. In an environment like this, you're never going to know early on exactly how things are going to land in terms of money, economy, safety. And you just simply try to cover everything you can and make sure everybody understands that and have a high level of communication within the organization. So hopefully, I don't steal his thunder about some of his presentations, but I think that that's very important that as a board, we take that approach and continue to, to work within those constructs. That's it for me in terms of board comments. We now can turn to public comments. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment? I know we have two student reps that are sometimes typically at, at the, at the first meeting of the month and wondering if they're out there, if they would like to participate. If not, I will open up to members of the public. Before I do that, I do want to go through our standard language. This is an opportunity for the board to address the, excuse me, for the public to address the Board of Education. If so, please complete a form. We will not address specific comments, but ask for name and address if the event follow-up is needed. We remind residents, the public comment portion is one item in a long agenda. We therefore ask each speaker be as succinct as possible. Remarks be limited to two to three minutes. We'd also expect residents speaking in respectful and courteous manner and to model proper civility and decorum for our students. Residents may also contact the board via email at boe@shenschools.org. All questions come into the office of Public Information Officer and are shared with the board and the superintendent as appropriate. Public question concerns are typically addressed by the board president. Operational questions, concerns to be addressed by the superintendent and are designated. So at this point, do we see any public request for comments at this part of the meeting? I do see one item on chat.
I just made the note that if the public have comments, they could send them to the BOE address. And Mrs. DeVissani, who's our Public Information Officer, will pick those comments up and relay them to us. So even if they come afterwards, we'll try to address them if they're appropriate at some other point.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So I'll recognize there are no public comments right now. Also, for the beginning of the meeting, comments presented will be addressed later on. So a different approach with the live stream. Also, one more note, Mr. Gilbert has arrived. So we're now with unanimous, not, excuse me, we now have seven board members on, at the meeting. So let's go to information items. Dr. Robinson, please start.
So at this point, Mr. Presser, I'm going to share my screen, which will be the board agenda, and use that for the basis of the, most of the conversation moving forward. So just bear with me as I share the screen.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Presser, just can you just please acknowledge, if you could see the board agenda at this point?
I can see it. Thank you.
Thank you. So as noted on the board agenda, we have several information items to walk the board through if there are any questions. The first of which is the board meeting dates for next school year. Those dates are typically approved this time of the year because those meeting dates trigger many other operational things as well. So if there are questions, we could address those questions later on. This is also listed as an action item for the board to act on. So I'll pause to see if there are any questions related to any of the dates.
Looks, sounds like we have no questions on this one.
Thank you. The, the next document, and I'm just going to open that document, is the Code of Conduct. And again, the board was shared, this document was shared with the board as well as on the public space. So, so Mrs. Carmen, who heads up our policy review process, put together this, this summary, if you will. We didn't make a lot of changes in the Code of Conduct, but we did make some changes to, as you see on this presentation, to reflect equity language in terms of ensuring that our policy addresses the needs of all students. So that's a, a, a significant component of that. As well as we did some definitional pieces. We recognized that a portion of the Code of Conduct was attempting to list every type of drug, which is impossible to do because things change often. So we provided some general language to be much more encompassing than not. And also, a big portion of the, the policy now, and you'll see on the next slide, is a focus on incorporating restorative practices, much more so in our Code of Conduct process. And as you'll see on, on this particular, on this particular screen, you'll see that we have certain levels of infractions. And, and those levels of infraction lend to certain disciplinary options. And now, in each one of those levels of infraction from level one, which is our modest infraction, so to speak, you see restorative practices highlight. Level two, you also receive restorative practices as a part of the disciplinary options. And level three, you also receive restorative practices as a part of the, the disciplinary options. Level four are typically things that are criminal or significant in, in outcomes. And so, so to have a restorative practice right away is often difficult because oftentimes in level four infractions, we have law enforcement engaged. So those are just some changes that were made to the Code of Conduct. And again, this document was out there for public review. It will remain on our website for public review in case there are comments that people like to have. And then we'll bring it back to the board for a second reading as a part of the next business meeting. So we pulled it out of these first reading items because by, by regulations, the Code of Conduct needs to be a separate item to allow for public comment. So we encourage you, members who are live streaming or otherwise, to review this document. And if they have any comments, to share those comments at boe@shenet.org address. And we will certainly try to incorporate those comments as appropriate in our Code of Conduct as we move forward. So I'll stop there in case there are questions for, for, from the board, for myself and/or Mrs. Carmen.
Okay, so no, no questions. I think we can move on.
And again, Mrs. Carmen is available. If there are questions related to the respective policies, did you see here? We have a wide variety of policies for first reading. One policy that the Policy Committee initially reviewed, but we pulled from this series was a policy relating to field trips. Because right now, we, we are reviewing the language related to particularly overseas field trips. And we want to make sure that language is not only reflective of our current situation, but also reflective of some practices surrounding chaperones. So that policy will be coming back, probably be engaged again with a policy review one more time before it comes back to the board for a first reading. So again, if there are questions that board members have, Mrs. Carmen stand ready to address any of those specific questions.
Okay, no, no questions on that one. I think we can move on to the temporary amendment of grading and calculation of final grades.
Sure. As the board is aware, we have, we, we made a lot of adjustments related to how we deliver curriculum, how we deliver grading. And this policy, we have two policies that impact grading here at Shen. One policy speaks directly to grading itself. And I just opened this document just as a, it's a resolution that's attached here, asking the board for a temporary amendment to, to Policy 7214, which is a policy related to grading systems, and Policy 7223, which goes with the calculation of grades. The, the major reason why we're doing so is, is right now, we're in the fourth quarter of the school year. And the fourth quarter of the school year is going to be graded based upon evidence of learning or not yet learned. And, and so essentially, we had to modify the policy to reflect this protocols in grading. So that's one piece that had to be modified. The second piece had to be modified was recognition that the New York State Board of Regents Council, Regis Examination, and in the past, Regis Examination have been a part of the grading sequence. So that had to be recognized, that change had to be recognized as well. And then the third part of the policy in terms of recognizing that the final grade or grade calculation for, in terms of a, a grade point average for this school year will be based upon grades granted in the first, second, and the third quarter. And the third quarter was extended to allow students to do any makeup, any redos, basically try to provide students all the opportunities to, to better or increase their grades for that third quarter. So the policy had to, to be revised to reflect that change in grading practices using first, second, and third quarter, with the fourth quarter being evidence of learning or not yet learned. So that's the, that's the modification to that. Everything else in that policy will continue, such as recognition of valedictorian's, iluditorium medals. All those will continue to be based upon three and three-quarter rank as well. So again, Dr. Wood, stand ready if there are specific questions that the board has pertaining to this temporary amendment. This will be also an action item, asking the board to take action on that tonight.
Hey, this is Todd. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Gilbert.
In the situation where a student is only in a course for a third and fourth semesters, would the grade be based on just their third quarter grade?
So that, that's also, I overlooked that. My apology. And certainly, Dr. Wood could chime in. We have a section here that speaks to fourth quarter grading. This section that fourth quarter grades will be, fourth quarter grades will be evidence of learned and not learned, recognizing that fourth quarter is a portion of third quarter was, was onsite, so to speak. Fourth quarter was completely online. So, so for those semester, second semester contained courses, meaning courses that, that occurred during the third and the fourth quarters, those courses would be based upon evidence of learned and not yet learned grading sequence. Did I address your question, Mr. Gilbert?
I think so. If it's a further one, I'll just, if, I'll follow up. I don't need to take the time here.
Yeah. And certainly, yes, absolutely. If you have any further question, you can either send myself or Dr. Wood for clarifying. No. Any other questions from board members?
I do. And thank you, Todd. That was a really good question. I was also curious about the ones that are not, that don't have grade persons, second quarters, that need summer school. How is that going to be handled?
So I want to, I want to make sure, understand your question, Mrs. Hoffman. For kids who, who need to go to summer school, you're saying?
Right.
So, so right now, the high school administration is, in fact, they have been for a while, looking extensively. When you think about typically a student who attends summer school is a student that typically also have struggled for the first half of the year. And, and so, so we're in the process now of, they have been identifying those students and trying to, quite frankly, to help those students as much as possible do any makeup, redos, things during, as much as we can during the, quote unquote, this school year, recognizing that as we plan for summer school in a virtual environment, it will be certainly different than your traditional summer school. So, so the high school is in the process now of identifying situations where if a kid is, can in fact make up, redo things during this year, we certainly want to do so. And for students who get the evidence of not learning at the end of the year, they'll be a part of our planning for virtual summer school.
Okay.
Dr. Wood, I don't know if you want to offer any clarifying. Dr. Wood, I don't know if you want to offer any clarifying statements related to either one of those questions?
I think you've covered it in both cases. So the half-year courses that are spring semester will just get the evidence of learning or not yet learned because the majority of the class time has been out of school. And for summer school, that's exactly right. We are working to figure out how we can support students now to the best of our ability because there is not that Regents exam or final exam that will kick in. It's really the average of the first three quarters. And so we're operationalizing some plans right now for students, knowing, you know, we'll help many of them to the best of our ability, and there still will be some sort of summer school option for those who don't make it by the end of June.
Thank you.
I think Grace has a question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mason.
I don't know if this is the only class that usually would happen over the summer, but for the students who signed up for summer health or classes like that, are those going to be canceled or are those going to be moved to be completely online?
So, so it's very likely, Grace, and if I was putting the odds on it, I would say, can you hear me still? Can you hear me? Yes or no? Mr. Pressley, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you, yes.
I thought somebody said they couldn't hear.
Yeah, my mic's not working.
So, so it's very likely that those type courses will be virtual. So again, as a part of when we look at our virtual summer school sequence, and to some degree, I even talk about it in the Continuity of Learning Plan later on, but we look at, we're in the process now, we're looking at virtual summer school offering as well as some enrichment opportunities in the summer school, not only for high school, but particularly for some of our younger students. So the short answer to your question is, we'll assess those courses and one, to see if those are courses that are critical to students' graduation sequence in terms of making sure that we offer them so kids stay online or within sequence, so to speak. And what more likely, those courses will be in a virtual space. Thanks, Grace. Any other questions before I move on, Mr. Pressley?
I don't see any more questions, so please move on. Thank you.
So I have five items, and I have to forgive me that may take a little time, but I think right now, these are the big rocks, so to speak, that certainly we're dealing with here at Shen, and I think every school district across New York State, dealing with these big rocks in some form or fashion. The first one, it's not a presentation to link, just a general comment, and we heard some of the sentiments expressed early by board members in a sense that, that people have really embraced the pivot of the system. And I use the word pivot because, quite frankly, within a month and a half, we have essentially changed our entire business model in terms of how we deliver curriculum instruction, and has been tremendously positively embraced by our, not only our teachers, our administrators, our support staff. So we have a large variety of people that's supporting the operations of schools in many ways. And the reason why I bring that up, because oftentimes, you hear people say, "school is closed," because that's a terminology, and I think it's unfortunate terminology that's being used. On-site classes are suspended, however, school is still open and every day for kids, and in many cases, even on the weekends, we have counselors reaching out to students on the weekends, we have teachers and support staff reaching out to students after hours, recognizing, and I'm just going to give you an example, I know of a student who was, because of family circumstance, who was a part-time worker after school, is now essentially a full-time worker because he's the only breadwinner in his family at a local department store. And so for that young person to pick up classes at nine o'clock in the morning when he has to be at work becomes impossibility. And so teachers are trying to be very accommodating to those sequences and situations. And that's why even our grading practice that we just discussed before, we went to that format because we know that circumstances for students are varied tremendously. We have situations where parents, quite frankly, are not equipped to quote-unquote "manage the learning process at home." And so we had a wide variety of situations. So we're trying to be very sensitive to those situations. We're trying to use staff in a wide variety of ways to support not only the academic growth and learning of our students, but also, and right now, the mental health and wellbeing aspects of our students. And so employee engagement is something that we've been monitoring very closely, and we're right now documenting more and more, trying to identify who are those people who are engaged, how are they engaged, how can we continue to use their services and maximize their roles moving forward? And for those who may not have been engaged as much, what's the role moving forward? I'd say moving forward for the, for the next month and a half or two months, as we in this particular school year, as well as we plan forward for the summer, as well as when we plan forward for the fall. So employee engagement and maximize capacity is a major undertaking that's being led right now by Jill Bush out of the HR office in conjunction with administrative supervisors across the board. But I would say largely kudos to our employees who have really embraced the pivot in of our work model and has really, you know, made a lot of strides. And I think people need to realize that New York State is not an online education state. So everything that we're doing right now, we're developing. There isn't a template, a roadmap, a book of links. Everything that we have on our website, we have developed either as a system or regionally through various collaborations. And so employee engagement is a big part of it. So I'll pause there in case there are questions related to that before I go to the next one.
I don't see any questions. Go ahead, please.
Sorry. Actually, I do have one question, and maybe this is something we can talk about offline, but just thought when we're talking about employees, did we, you know, I assume and never assume, they say that we might have hired some new staff, whether they were substitutes, one-on-one aides, so forth and so on, right before the social distancing happened. And then when we had a pivot, I'm sure some of them might have been put on hold because at the time, you know, they weren't needed physically within the classrooms because the online virtual learning. For some of those folks, what do we foresee? Because if they're not working right now, and they say they were offered a job, but then put on hold, like I said, due to, due to social distancing, you know, I just worry about some of these folks that are part of our, our family, if you want to say, our employees. But, you know, if we don't go back to, you know, being in the classroom, you know, is there any way of looking at that and how we can incorporate some of these folks even through the online learning, if we traditionally may not, for additional supports like we talked about, you know, for mental health, even for our other employees that need some supports even through the virtual learning? Does that make sense, or am I babbling?
No, I think it makes sense. And I'm just trying, I'm going to clarify a little bit. Hopefully, hopefully I'm clarifying that and being consistent with what you're saying. We actually went through and looked at employees that were, quite frankly, the board meeting prior, right prior to us going into a virtual space. And the, right now, I cannot think of a single person that was appointed that wasn't replacing someone who we needed anyway. In other words, what I mean by that, we had term appointments, teachers who were going on maternity leaves or, and we brought in a term teacher. So that term teacher essentially became the teacher of record for that class in the virtual space. We had some support staff situations that, that we needed people to come onboard. So, so, so I cannot, and if there was one, if there's an instance that Mrs. Bush tell me tomorrow, I'd be sure more than happy to share with the board, but in almost every instance, those individuals that were coming onboard, they were coming onboard to replace someone whose functionality that we needed and use throughout the virtual time that we're in now. And just like anything else, as we get to the end of the school year and plan forward, we have to figure out who's returning when, and do we continue with certain employees that are on term, or substitute-type situations? Does that make sense, Mrs. Trujat?
Yes, it does. I just figured I'd ask, just in case there was, I wasn't sure. That's why I figured I'd ask, just worried also about those folks as well.
Yep, yep. So, so the next big thing that we're engaged in, and what I'm going to share with the board, is it's truly just a thumbnail sketch of a pretty comprehensive plan. The state of New York requires school districts to, to create what they call a continuity of learning plan. When this, when we first went into a virtual space back in mid-March, every school district put together, quite frankly, was a plan in terms of what we think we'll be able to do. And clearly, now that we're about a month and a half into or more into virtual space, we recently had to update their plan. So I won't necessarily, it's a plan that's submitted on a portal to State Education Department. But I just wanted to highlight for the sake of the board and for the public to understand the extent of the things that this plan entails, we have a pretty extensive detail, everything in terms of learning materials, what type of materials that we provide to students, how we provide them material, is it virtual, is it paper versions? What's the content? Dr. Wood has been leading, been a part of, and I would quite frankly, leading a regional initiative that talks about, they're looking at a prioritized curriculum and things of that nature, communications too, how are we communicating with parents? And that has been, quite frankly, the probably one thing that we have done in significant ways in terms of multiple types of communication with parents and students. Students and teacher interactions, what's the method of doing, so the online method, Google Classroom, and a wide variety of different software platforms that's being used, and it goes with the number three and four. Internet access for both students and teachers. We're fortunate that most households within the district have internet access in some unique situations that they didn't. We have tried to connect people with Time Warner Cable or Verizon, some of those outfits that have offered their services. Ken McDermott and his IMS team have done a wonderful job with, with not only distributing Chromebooks and iPads and laptops to students and to staff, but also supporting those devices while they're out there in space. And so, so we have a pretty comprehensive process that we use to go with the distribution of device and connectivity. Unique needs of students, which is, as you know, as school district, we are keenly focused on equity and opportunities and outcomes. And certainly, Mrs. Mylott and her team has been, a slew of IEP CSC meetings are still taking place remotely. The administration or the execution of IEP requirements or services to students is happening. Kudos to special education teachers in that front. Sarah Choffey and her team with ELL students in need, English language learners, tremendous effort has taken place. Outreach to homeless students has been something that, again, coordinated by building principals and counselors to making sure that we're touching bases with students, that we understand their home situations, that we're supporting their connectivity so they can continue to be engaged in educational process. Alternative place students in terms of students placed outside of the district, clear coordination with all those placements, opportunities to, again, to ensure that all those students are receiving direct instruction or instruction that's, that's consistent with their respective plans. So that's a big part of this plan as well. Addressing the social emotional needs of students is a major part of this plan, and several board members commented tonight. So everything from the fun things that people do to counselors reaching out to students on the weekend who might be struggling because of various circumstances. So you go to the extremes in terms of supporting the social emotional needs of our students. You heard, the board heard at the last board meeting, a presentation from some of our counselors that that's their job, reaching out to students to support them, but not only counselors, things happening with teachers. We have aides who know that they have certain kids that they work with during the school year, reaching out to those kids to provide emotional supports and otherwise as well. And then we have a large, wide variety of different things that we're using to deploy continuity of learning. So again, I wanted to share this with the board because even though it's just a listing of things, trust me, these eight things encompass, I would say, 99% of the work of our academic leaders, because we want to ensure that the learning experience of students is one that recognize the various needs of students, also, as much as possible, try to recognize the various circumstances under which our students are currently operating, and also being very mindful of the demands that's being placed on parents. And one of the things that Dr. Wood is fond of saying is that anything that we are asking students to do, it shouldn't be relying on how well their parents could help them do it. Because we want to try to have the situation as independent as possible. Teachers are working both from the standpoint of live in terms of using conferencing software, as well as providing videos as supports to students, as well as providing links so students access information. So wide variety of ways trying to ensure that continuity of learning is taking place. Again, I'll stop there in case there are specific questions that the board may have, and also, Dr. Wood is available if there, if there's certain things that she wants to elaborate on as well.
I have a question, if you don't mind. What exactly is SED going to do with all these reports? Do we expect any outcomes from them or any further direction back to school districts? Or is the board just a historical record of what we did, what we've done for the fourth quarter?
So, so, interesting question, Mr. Pressley. One of the two things the state wants to do, and the state wants to make, one, make sure that every school district has plans and have executed plans to provide education to students. And I think to some degree, we are fortunate here at Shen, we are fortunate being in the Capital Region. And it's not far-fetched to say that some of the best school districts in the state are in the Capital Region, and I would put Shen in that pile of school districts. And so consequently, when we look at what we're doing, we can't make the assumption that, that school districts in other parts of the state are doing something similar. So part of the state's focus, objective, if you will, is to collect these plans to make sure that, that education is being provided to students, being provided to students in some form or fashion across the state, recognizing that it's not about uniformity because New York is not an online state, so to speak. So that's one piece of it. My hope, and from this, is that all this information once gathered can turn into best practices in terms of how we truly, as a state, provide much more online access to courses. If you just recently read, just today, the Bill Gates Foundation will be partnering, the governor announced, partnering to look at reimagining education in New York State. I would, and a big portion of that is how do we use technology different, how do you look at virtual spaces different? So, so right now, the State Education Department has 700-plus plans. That's a lot of information to gleam and a lot of best practices from. So my hope is that those, that information will be, will be cultivated, and we come up with a much more uniform way as a state to provide education moving forward, be it as a result of being concerned about the presence of COVID-19 or the realities that here we are sitting on May 5, 2020, and a lot of the models that we have in New York State for education were built in the 30s and 40s and 50s. And so how do we finally dismantle some of the archaic structures and, quite frankly, modernize our approach to education? So that's my hope, and that's the hope of many people, that all this information, all this good thinking, all these best practices that are being documented would turn into a blueprint to truly reimagine education in New York. Certainly, Shen as a school district, regardless of what the state does, we are already in the process because there's so many things that we're saying to ourselves, wow, we would never do that again in that old way, this way is much better. And it's a combination. So it's not about one way or the other way, it's trying to find what's the best combination to maximize our time, to maximize our technology, to best meet the need, the learning needs of our students.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, let's go to the next item, please.
Thank you. So, so the next big rock, and again, I don't want to discount it because this is like, I tell people, I don't sleep much, and, but these are the kind of things that keep everyone awake, including myself. The next big rock is, is the reopening of school. This initiative started with the notion that if we were coming back some point this academic year, how would we do so? And clearly, that has extended now to what does potential summer look like, what does potential fall looks like? And so personally, I'm a part of a regional group that, kudos to Anita Murphy at the Capital Region, BOCES. She has been a tremendous leader in this initiative, not only regionally here, but now we're extending to Western New York. And essentially, a lot of the documents is coming out of the work, regional work, out of the 24 component schools in this region are being shared across the state and, quite frankly, across the nation, because I'm also part of a national group that's looking at reopening. And yesterday, we had our first meeting, and I mentioned what we were doing regionally, and people were just absolute at awe with it. I shared a link of what we're doing through our BOCES, and now that's across the country as well. So needless to say, So, so needless to say, schools in the capital region will be influencing how things happen across the, the nation. Because sadly, a lot of political leaders in many states want to open the economy, back to Mr. Delalo's comment, open the economy without understanding the implication for schools. And I'm just going to give you one example from our conversation yesterday on our national conversation, a school district in Texas where Texas was rushing to open. The superintendent said, I have no idea how I'm going to bring 40,000 kids back to school on Monday. And yet the, the mantra is you open school on Monday. And so, so, so we started sharing resources to do so, which I hope to God that he doesn't. Because obviously you see the implication of doing that. So with that being said, we're looking at, at grabbing information regionally, nationally, and quite frankly, I probably should have updated this particular slide. We have the benefit Anna Sugarman, who's a professional developer. Anna is also part of the International School Network. And, and she was recently on a webinar of sorts. And the international schools are also looking at the same thing. So, so not only are we trying to learn from what's happening within this country, we're also trying to learn from what's happening in other countries who quite frankly are ahead of us, US in terms of how they address the COVID-19 issue initially and how they're now at a place that they could more appropriately respond, particularly opening of economies, opening of schools. So we're trying to gather information from wherever we could get information. In fact, I just downloaded what someone just described as a blueprint for back to school. Again, a major research study that's taking place across the country. So, so I'd give that to the backdrop to the board that as we sit and contemplate and reopen the schools, it's not a very, it's not a layman's perspective that we're taking. We're, we're trying to get information from the best minds, from a, a wide variety of perspectives from across the globe for that matter, to ensure that we're doing the right things. So with that being stated, so when we start talking about defining, refining the framework for opening the schools, we had to start talking about then what are the terms, what are the things, what's the alternative future? And so, so we had to define what does schools actually look like in the future? Considering the various factors and reimagining these type things. And so even this recent announcement by the governor about the, the Gates Foundation, I hope that they'll be inviting school personnel to be a part of that. Because a lot of us have been doing a lot of this thinking before. And also asking about what are those things that's sacred about schools that we want to hold on to, what are those guiding values, commitments and beliefs? And certainly here Shenandoah, we have been driven by our values and beliefs for, for decades and those things serve as our North Star. So, so how do we start with that proverbial why? And then decide what we want to do and then end up with how do we best do it versus starting how and trying to hope that meets the why? We really want us to keep the focus on our North Star as we move forward. So just for the purpose of, of this, it's again, pretty extensive planning process. We're looking at external factors, what are those guide rails? What are those things that, those decisions, those rules, those regulations? That's going to determine what, how far left or right we can go or how fast we can go with certain things. The guide rail, so to speak. So what's the economic impact, the short, the midterm, the long-term impact? What's the political impact, not only what's happening from the governor, but what are, what are state associations and, and their influence on how decisions are being made as well? What's the societal, what's the dominant expectations? You have some states that the dominant expectation is, and I just, I'm, I'm not picking on Texas. But the reality of it is they made a, a decision, get everybody back. And as Mr. Delalo said, everybody's saying, everybody go back, but people weren't ready to go back because people are still very much anxious about the, the health implication. What's the technology capacity? We are fortunate here in Shen that a large majority of our households and students have infrastructure in place, but we know that's not a reality across the state or the country. So what's the technological capacity that we have now? And even more so, if we may have able to do it in short term, but can we sustain that over a long period of time? What's going to be the impact on bandwidth, internet capacity, all those kinds of things as we move forward? And the reality of it is, quite frankly, internet access should be just another utility in people's household and not a special item that, that some people have and some people don't have. But again, it's not a political statement, it's a reality because we seen it showing up in, in the inequities that kids are dealing with. What's the demographic impacts across the region? The governor's approach to reopening, looking at a regional perspective. With the capital region versus the North Country versus Western New York. All those are some external factors we have to think about. And then what's the regulatory impact? What is the health, the, the New York State Department of Health saying? What is the CDC saying? What's the New York State Education Department saying? What's the Federal Department of Education saying? What are those regulatory rules and demands? That's going to ultimately drive then what we look at internally, what our drivers, when we start doing scenario analysis. The board is going to hear a minute when we start talking about financial capacity. What's our budget capacity? In terms of how we not only plan for next year, but for the next several years, particularly if we start talking about reimagining our schools. What does that mean from a fiscal perspective? What does that mean from a technological perspective? What does that mean from a human resource perspective? Do we have to retrain people? Do we have to hire different types of people with different types of skill sets? So what do those type things mean? What does that mean from content, not only content delivered, but content itself? And so, so we have to go into a hybrid form into the fall, hybrid meaning portion remote, portion onsite. What does that mean? What's the scheduling impact of those kinds of things? How does that, what's the culture of our community in terms of embracing a hybrid approach to schools? Who are we serving? Who's driving the conversation? Is the conversation being driven by the, the needs of our students? Or is it a conversation being driven by the needs of businesses? All those things are important, but we have to know who are the constituencies that we're dealing with as we move forward. So, 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 so again, those are the, the framework factors that, that drive the definition of the why and the what we need to do. And then we start getting to how, what are some action steps? And so, so right now we have a pretty extensive planning document that we're looking at everything such as health and hygiene measures in terms of not only facilities on buses. And it's not about how do we clean it once, but how if we have to do this many, many times during the course of the day? How does that happen? What's the implication, what's the capacity, cost capacity, human resource capacity related to those kinds of things? If we have to do social distances and distance in classrooms. Right now, the, the international standard based upon some countries that have opened up already is about eight to 12 students in classroom space that allow for, for that six, um, six feet, this social distance in peace. Is that a feasibility? So we're in the process of, of just quite frankly, just doing numerical analysis on space to see if those things are even feasible. Suppose you have to go to stagger schedule, what does stagger schedules look like? What's the impact on courses? What's the impact on food service? What's the impact on transportation? If we had to go to stagger schedule, who first, who second? What's the impact on childcare on capacity? What's, all those kinds of major, major factors that we have to think about and think through and, and, and look at all the nuances as we move forward. Having multiple calendars, if we're going to go to multiple schedules. Again, the, the hybrid approach to instruction, this emotional support. How do we now, so doing this for a month and a half, we know has been taxing and challenging. Another month and a half is going to become taxing. If we have to do this for an extended period of time, what are the social emotional supports that we have to have? Not only, and on this I said help for students, quite frankly, with you, help for students and employees in terms of the, the support that people need as we move forward. What does that mean for large events? The feasibility of those things occurring? So, so again, I shared this framework with the board because we meet every two weeks and, and I'm sure that you're pondering, you know, what's happening? You hear things happening in news. And I'd never want the board to think about, are we doing anything at Shen one? Or more importantly, what are we doing? So to give you a broad sense of the many, many factors that, that are at play. And, and we're not limiting our, our ability to execute based upon our knowledge. We're truly trying to reach out, branch out and be a part of many, many conversations. Regionally, statewide, nationally, and even internationally, trying to get the best information so we can forge the best plan for Shen, but also try to influence how schools across the country also look at a reopening. Because we know that, that the success of one lends to the success of the other. In the same way, the failure of one hampers the success of the next. So we're trying to look at it from a very collective, from a collective work and responsibility perspective. Again, I'll pause there in case there are questions that the board may have.
I have a question. In looking at this, and I know it's meant to be big picture, not necessarily to, obviously the devil's in the details or to get into the weeds. Pick your cliche. I guess my question has to do with understanding our population because one metric is thrown out in this and that is class sizes of 12 or fewer. And so my question is specific to, have, have we looked at our population in, both when I say population, I mean our students and our teachers? Because the 12 is probably assuming so many teachers can come back in the building. And, and, and knowing what, identifying those who are, who are either at risk that will opt not to return, but whether that's a teacher or student. Have we done that type of analysis? So that, I, I'm just curious how we got to 12? Or is that a general guide that came from the CDC or some other group?
So, so the, the answer to your last part first. The 12 is, is, is a growing narrative that's taking place. And a lot of that comes from people looking at, at what some of the other countries that are opening school right now. Everywhere from Denmark to Sweden to Taiwan. And, and what people are seeing in terms of, of what's manageable from a social distancing perspective. But also then what's a worthwhile experience, a school experience for kids? And so, so there's nothing magical about the 12 nor the 12 is, is, is an absolute. It's, it's a benchmark point, point for us to start thinking about. So if your typical classroom, right now, most of our classroom average around 24 students when you look at it averaging K-12 across the board. And so, so basically saying, if you look at typical classroom space and take out half the desks, half the kids, can we effectively do that? So, so that's the first part, so the 12, there's nothing magical to it other than that's kind of a growing piece right now. Some places are looking at eight, some, it all depends on capacity. That's why the numerical analysis becomes important. So, so to go to the second part of your question, we, we're not even close to the point yet to be, be concerned about who's going to be doing what. We first need to know what's from a space capacity perspective, if this is even feasible. So I'm going to give you a, 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 a gross hypothetical. So hypothetically, now you're hypothetical, realistically, we have about 4200 K5 students within our system. And, and so, so we need to start saying that, okay, if, if, if the mantra is bring all and have, have elementary kids come back to school. And again, for anyone listening to me, it's all hypothetical. So I don't want people to run off and say, oh my God, this is what Shen is doing. It's, it's, it's all a part of our scenario analysis, if you will. So if we say hypothetically, and actually let me use a high school for even better one. High school, at high school west, we have about 2,800 kids at high school west. Right now it's impossible to do social distancing with 2,800 kids. I'm in high school east, I'm sorry, at high school east. Impossible to do social distancing with 2,800 kids. So the question is that if we're going to run high school on, on some kind of schedule, we may very well have to spread kids out. If we want to bring all 2,800 kids back at the, in the same day, we may well have to use high school east and high school west and even the portion in middle school to, to do so. So, so we won't know that until we start doing the numerical analysis. So what, what we need to first try to find out is from a, a pure spacing sequence, what's feasible? And then from that, then we start looking at staffing capacity. And that's why if you look at the first piece that we're looking at right now, engagement, making a capacity and seeing if this is the model, what's our staffing capacity? What, what, and where are the gaps in terms of executing this model? Because it's great to have a model, but if you can't execute the model, it's a useless model. But the first thing we need to have alternative models to look at it as well. So, so those are worst case scenarios if we have a situation that we have to go back to a, a combination of, 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 of more virtual than not. And so if we go in that situation, how do you then complement an onsite portion with a virtual portion? So, so back to your second part of the question, at some point will we have to do that analysis? Absolutely, because at the end of the day, whatever plan we put together, we have to be able to execute it.
One more quick question. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you follow up.
In this plan, how do, how do our, our support facilities, say like the libraries fit into this? Have you, have you thought through that piece?
So, 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 so right now, and probably help your, for your perspective, we're, we are, are quite frankly, roughly a, a week or so into thought. And this would take months before we have plan that recognize all the details. First of all, as, as I pointed out on, on that document, there are certain guardrails that, that, that we have to, 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 to know in terms of regulatory requirements, all those things that's going to dictate what we do. And, and again, hypothetically, if, if we decided we're going to do anything, now you've hypothetical, realistically, if we're going to do anything with a modification of, of schedule for secondary students, it's going to impact or it's going to be dependent on changes in state education department regulations related to seat time, related to, 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 to credits, related to graduation requirements. All those things have to, so that's why I, I say that, that, that this isn't any one singular piece. And it's not any one singular place doing a plan and rolling out. And that's why now this conversation is heating up much more so at the state level. And, 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 and what we're trying to do locally and otherwise is to quite frankly, with you, influence the thinking of what would ultimately, I would think, come down the pike in terms of regulatory changes coming from the state education department. So, so, so we're, we're literally weeks and months into a lot of planning. Even once we have plans in place, it's going to be evaluating and, and revising things as we go along. No different than what we're doing right now with the virtual space. So, so more to come and, 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 and as, as we, again, the, this, this is a framework that I want to share with the board, not necessarily specific details.
Well, I did have a question. They're talking about, you know, getting best practices from all sorts of sources and including international sources and so forth. And how we would apply those at Shen. Isn't there, how do I put this? Isn't there a very strong likelihood that a lot of those alternatives would be taken away from us by a higher body, state? Or whatever, saying this will be the way we will go. I don't mean down to the last dotting of the I and crossing of the T, but still nonetheless confining enough so that we really don't have that option.
So, so Mr. Delalo, you, that, that is, and so I, I say that's a, a fear. And it's a fear because of my concern of people making decisions from a level or with a lack of expertise in terms of the nuances, how things roll out. And so subsequently, that's the reason why, particularly the regional approach that we're doing now. So when you think about right now, most of the educational provisions that's happened across the state is modeled after the work that was coordinated through the regional effort through the capital region BOCES. And we have, we have Dr. Wood, who's been a major, major component of that. Lauren Gammel, who's a former Shen person, who's now a deputy soup at the capital region BOCES. And a wide variety of assistant superintendents from across the region put together a plan that quite frankly, the state education department that doesn't have, that does not have the capacity looked at and realized that this is something that needs to be shared across the state as a resource. Clearly if, and a lot of the capacity issue is a funding capacity issue. And so, so, so again, I haven't read it, read the details yet about the recent announcement about the, the Gates Foundation infusing funds. I hope and I pray that, that the processes don't become politicized and, and people put out their broad generic things that are virtually impossible for us to execute with fidelity. And/or for us to execute in a way that, that best meets the very, the varied needs of our students here at Shen or some students in Skowher or wherever those situations might be. So the nuances become a big part of it. So yes, that is a fear, Mr. Delalo. And that's the reason why we are so, when I say we, particular superintendents from this region are very aggressive about coming out with templates, coming out with models to try to minimally influence the conversation. Ideally having some best practices, best practice models that can be replicated and used across the state in a larger scale.
Yeah, a second question. As you know, I, I've done some brainstorming of my own relative to this. But when you consider various alternatives, some of them are workable within the existing structures, obviously changing perhaps the school day, the, the school week. Some of them can be done within our existing professional staff. Others would be virtually impossible at the present time because it would involve more expense and more people than we have. But there also is the quest, a, a, a more significant question, I think. And that is when we're looking at this, what's our steering goal? Are we still trying to preserve the kind of rich and diverse curriculum and the kinds of offerings that we have? Are we looking at a possible necessity of paring down some of these things? Uh, possible necessity of paring down some of these things? If I could see where, because certification and tenure areas has become so proliferated. Over the course of years that there uh would be a limited of limited amount of ability to reuse the same people. Uh, if we had a growth, a big growth in one area and a a reduction in another. Uh, I believe the rule is still that you can teach one course a day outside of your certification area. That wouldn't work. So. I I I guess my my, the main focus of my question here is. Are we try, are we still trying as the most important sig uh steering idea, trying to preserve? The uh nature of our curriculum and program as it is? Or do we already know that that's probably going to not be able to be preserved?
So so the answer to your question is is an absolute yes. That's our goal. And I I pulled up this slide. Hopefully. It's um viewable from the board that that the two questions at the the third bullet. What is sacred about our schools and what are the guiding values, commitments and beliefs? At the end of the day. Um, our North Star is going to drive the plans that we tried to put together. Um, in other words, um, we started from the perspective of, um, can you still see the screen, Mr. Presley?
I'm sorry, I was mute. Uh, yes, I can see the agenda.
Yes. So 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 back to Mr. Delalo's question. Um, truly, uh, our our North Star is driving what we're doing. And so we're coming from the perspective of. This is, this is a quality experience we want for our kids. Under the circumstances, how do we best do so? We're not coming from the perspective of, these are the circumstances and this is all that we can do and we're just going to have to settle for the result. We're coming from the perspective of, this is what we want in terms of the the quality experiences, um, exposures, diversity of options. And under the circumstances, how do we best do so? And so 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 truly, we we want a situation where the tail is not wagging a proverbial dog. Versus the dog wagging the tail. And I hate to kind of use that kind of crude analogy, but your question is is a very valid one, uh, Mr. Delalo. Because I think it also speaks to your your first question in terms of if there are regulatory demands placed on schools. What's the what's the intentionality behind those regulatory demands? Is it simple to say we want to give a semblance of schools? Or is it to provide schools enough flexibility to hold on to the quality programming that um? That that quite frankly, we expect as 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 a system and and parents and students ex- uh expect as. Um, um, stakeholders are, should I say, customers from our system. So 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 that absolutely, that's our intent. And that's why, quite frankly with you, I personally myself, I have volunteered a ton of time um to to be on these committees. Because many of them are are meeting that's eight, nine o'clock at night just because of time differences across the country. And the reason why is because we need to to make sure that in a time of crisis, we don't lose sight of why we in business in the first place.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. That's very encouraging.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Great questions from everybody. Anybody else with a question? Okay, so uh, let's move on to the next item, please.
So 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 just to, it's it's very apropos to go with Mr. Delalo's question. Um, as as you're talking about when when regulations are handed down to schools. And again, um, this is not a judgment call about the governor's decision, lack of or otherwise. Um, because there's been many decisions made and and it's a complicated unprecedented time. But this is one that quite frankly, we're schools across the state are struggling with big time. Um, recently, this past Friday, executive order two oh two point two six came down. It talks about board um budget votes in the election. And even till four or five o'clock this afternoon, I'm still on the phone with various attorneys trying to. People trying to unravel how this thing is going to play out. I'm still hopeful to have my fingers and toes crossed that that the executive um office. Will say, whoa, we need to change that language because it's quite frank with you, one simple word. In that executive order that turned this whole thing upside down and is requests for absentee ballots. Ironically, if you get a chance, and I shared it with the board last week, if you read that executive order, the rules for villages. Says that if people request a ballot, they should send them. The rule for schools, um, as you see here, um, said that. We should send, provide it to all qualified voters. Those two words difference, provide to all and request. Um, made this whole process absolutely night and day. So so again, um, I I'm walking the board through right now the current conditions. Um, and so so as if things evolve, um, there's some things tonight as a result of this that we need to have the board take some some actions on as move forward. So the one good thing or bad thing, however you want to look at it, um, the vote date has been set for June ninth. Um, so so that's that's that is just a given right now under the current executive order. The order also says that qualified voters shall um be provided with um uh everything to be on absentee ballots. And so clearly, when that happened, the word qualified, words mean certain things, particularly in the in the legal arena. Um, every every lawyer, school lawyer, of course, the state started debating what's the definition of qualified? And also later on in the in the order that talks about eligible voters. And so what's the difference between qualified and eligible? Are they the same thing? Were they meant to be the same thing? Can it be interpreted to be the same thing? So there's a lot of legal questions surrounding that piece of it. Another piece of the executive order was waiver for procurement of of um for of things together to 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 prepare for. And absent and all absentee ballot um voting sequence, everything from the envelopes, the papers, so they waived those procurement rights. And yeah. That's a nice thing to do, but the reality of it is the sheer magnitude is such that we still have concern. Um, can we, when I say we not only here Shen, but even regionally, get enough supplies to effectively do this? And so we're working through some of those processes right now. We're we're coordinating through the capital region BOSI's. We're also coordinating through the county board of election to ensure that we get those things. And here's a major unknown for us here at Shen. Um, right now, we're trying to get the numbers and um I'm just going to highlight this so it can be pretty clear to the board. Um, right now, we are trying to see how many registered voters in Saratoga County that reside in the Shen district. That number could be as high as about sixty thousand. And if that number is that high, um, keep in contrast that. Last year for the budget vote, we only had two thousand two hundred people on average vote over the past three years. I said last year. Over the past three years on average. So when you think about this, if we had to send out ballots to 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 potentially sixty thousand people. When in reality, over the last three years, the average number of voters is about twenty two hundred people. Um, you can certainly see um the reason why there's such a major concern in terms of the excessive nature of this one term that says. Um, to be provided to all qualified voters because when we have the polls open from seven AM to nine PM. Everyone has access to it and we have average around twenty two hundred people. So a major, just 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 from a very simple perspective, because there are many, many, many um layers of this that we have to unravel. But just to give you some perspective, if we had to mail out these, and right now, we just estimating based upon US postal price. Clearly, we're going to try to get a better price point if we do mass posts, mash mail, and those kind of things, if we get a better price point. But we're talking about sixty five thousand plus just for postage. And that's not talking about printing and envelopes and all those kind of things. And so so this is going to be a a very costly proposition for school districts. Um, if we have to go that route um as well. A second, and again, I'm just going to walk through this and and see if there are questions from board members. A second piece that came on the executive order was about board candidates. Um, and eliminated the 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 signature piece uh for people getting signatures for 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 the petition. Um, and so essentially, um, it's saying that that candidates, um, um, they gave a threshold of of May eleventh and twelfth, but the reality of it is. The next one that talks about a a legal notice going out on the twelfth um is is impossibility. So right now, we are aware of. Um, um, and I'm I'm still confirming three, potentially four individuals that may um be on the the ballot for 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 the board. Um, candidacy. And so so that's a big part of that as well, because now people don't have to do the signatures because of obvious reasons. Uh, but we certainly know that we need to know of any candidate prior to um. The 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 board adopting the budget on the nineteenth because there's a sequence of things. So ideally, we need to know prior to that because we'll be preparing postcards and notices and all those things to go out. Once the board adopt the budget and drop their number into those postcards. So 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 that's that's the piece that in the coming week. We'll be seeing um what candidates or potential candidate names that might be listed on that legal notice. Uh, related to that um piece of it, when I say legal notice, I I want to confuse two things on the budget notice. Budget notice is different from legal notice. The legal notice is the one that the board had initially approved, that we had to publish four times, forty five days. Um, however, um, the that rules have been changed and now we 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 we're allowed to only to to publish it two times. Um, um, within twenty eight days before the election and the first publication. Subsequently, that's the reason why on the agenda, the board is asked to modify, to approve the modified notice so we can in fact be ready. For the first publication on May twelfth. Um, so the adoption date, as we're proposing now, is May nineteenth. And we hope that the state is going to be true to what they've said that by May fourteenth, we will have some sense of what the revised state aid numbers will be. So subsequently, our bu- our budget proposal on May nineteenth will reflect um whatever those, um, if there's going to be more reduction in state aid. Um, as well. And the second part to that then is a budget hearing um that follows the budget adoption on May twenty six. So let me, because it's going to be a lot of parts. Before I go too far and people lose sight of the questions. Any questions that that you have right now in terms of the May ninth vote, the the procurement piece and or the board candidate piece?
Just just, um, so you said May ninth, did you mean May nineteenth?
I'm sorry, May nineteenth is adoption. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, May nineteenth is the adoption. Okay. Um, so how does this work when, if everybody mails it in? Do they have to be post stamped?
So so let me, let me get to that. Let me get to that piece. So so again, I I'm sorry, Mrs., because it's so I, so 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 I get, we have a section on that too. So so we'll talk about that. So let me get to that in a second, the second half of this.
Dr. Robinson, did you say four potential candidates?
Um, yes, four potential, because we have some inquiries, so I don't know if they're actually going to submit the form. There's a candidate acknowledgement form.
Got you. Thanks.
So 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 let me pick up and and Mrs. Hoffman, I'll get to your 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 question um in a second here. Um, so the legal notice piece, that's the reason why the board is again asked to adopt the modified version tonight, May fifth. So we can be ready for that first publication um by uh May twelfth, and then we have to have a second publication. Which we probably have the following week as well. And that legal notice is basically saying that the district is going to have a budget. It's going to have um a resolution for bus purchases. It's going to have a public hearing that's going to be scheduled for. Um, uh, May um twenty sixth, and you'll see the legal notice once we get to the agenda piece of it. And then it's going to have some instructions surrounding absentee ballots um as well. So so it's pretty generic um type notice. The the another change as a result of the executive order was the submission of our property tax report card to the state education department. This is more of an internal process that Mrs. Chase um handles. And so so that deadline is May twenty second. And again, in order for us to have the proper tax report card ready, we need to have what's our budget proposal. So one thing then to the next thing. Um, as well. So once after the board adopts a budget proposal on the nineteenth, we'll be geared up to send out the property tax uh report card. To the state no later than May twenty second. So quite frankly with you, it'd be the next day that Mrs. Wetmore will be uploading that to the portal. Um, the 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 budget adoption again, um, um, we kind of go backwards in the calendar in terms of of the the budget adoption by. By the executive order, the budget must be adopted at least seven days before the budget hearing. Um, and so if you think about the budget here being on the twenty sixth, seven days before that is by the nineteenth. Um, we also then need to the 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 change, the executive order speaks about. Um, notice to the public via postcard, specifically said postcard. So so the question that's being asked is that does that postcard replace what we have um called our standard budget statement that we sent out? In our newsletter and things of that nature? The 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 common understanding right now is yes, because. The executive language was so specific related to postcard. So we hope that's the case because quite frankly, if it's not. That's a whole nother series of developing documents and mailing out again. Um, so we we're working through that process right now as well. So after the nineteenth adoption, we'll be ready to send out that public statement um on the twentieth. And so clearly, we'll be doing a lot of things. Prior to that, just to drop their number in uh and hit go after the board um approves that piece of it. So again, we're looking at some coordination from the printing and mailing and those kind of things as much as as we can through BOSI's because. Being in the COVID nineteen situation, a lot of our businesses that we typically meet with are are working with. Um, not maybe in some cases not even open or or minimal staff, and so it creates a capacity issue when you think about across the region. Regionally, there's some estimates that in just in the capital region, we could be sending out more than a quarter million um ballots. To to voters. And so when you think about how excessive that number is, um, coordination is going to be key to make sure that that actually can happen. Um, and and also then make sure that that um, the 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 various county boards of election. We're in Saratoga County, but um Schenectady County Board of Election actually produced the ballots that we use. At the board meeting. So 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 they're trying to get numbers to gear up to see how many ballot sheets they need to order. And how fast can they generate all these ballots and ready for us to have them mailed out or for someone to have them mailed out? So so again, through a very coordinated conversation with BOSI's, we're trying to identify a wide variety of different options for postage, for mailing. To to make sure that, again, we have a short window. Here we are on May fifth, and all this is going to happen within a two week period. Yes, sir.
Sorry, quick question, and if you mentioned this, I apologize. If we have to send out the ballots to everybody. Are we also required to include the return postage for them to mail them back?
Yes, yes. So 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 yes, um, and yes, we do. And I'm going to, let me go to that right now.
Okay.
The the next comment, yes, yes, thank you. Um, so 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 again, redundancy, but I I literally went through the executive. Um, um, order and and try to see how the different sections applied to us and apply date and put the dates in sequence. The budget here will be on the twenty sixth, um, and there are reason why, there's a reason why, there's a timeframe that's involved, that why the budget hearing has to be on certain dates. The absentee ballots is the biggest issue that we have right now. And so the 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 executive um um order gives a window that's between May tenth and June second. Um, realizing that, okay, if, so June second is not even realistic when you think about a vote on June ninth. And so so if you send something out on June second, which um, um, I I don't even know what date of the week that is, but. The reality of sending out um um a ballot on a Monday, on the side, that's a Tuesday. And hoping that people will do it, send it back to us by the ninth. I'm not sure if the US mail actually even works that fast. Uh, to be quite frank with you. So 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 consequently, um, our goal is shortly, um, right after the the board adopts the budget on the nineteenth. Um, to start having these things being distributed widely. So right now, we're not even sure exactly who is going to distribute, how we're going to distribute, but we know. They have to be distributed. So so back to to address both the question that uh Mrs. Hoffman had and. Mister um um Gilbert, as well as sure other board members might be considered as well. So let me just walk through, this is the biggest piece of it right now. So initially, the first part of the executive order said that we need to send out to. To 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 all qualified, that's why the words, two words came into sequence. The the second part of the this executive order um speaks to um every eligible voters. And so so you know, the language shift was kind of interesting. I put here in this sequence because quite frankly with you, if these two words, who requests. Were a part of this sequence, it changes the whole conversation because we would have put out a notice right now. To say, anyone who wants a absentee ballot, send it to us and we will send you the ballot with a postage page return envelope to send it back to us. Certainly, it gives everyone a chance to to quite frankly, exercise their right to vote by simply saying, send us an email with your 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 name address. And we'll send it to it. And to some degree, it gives, it would have given us some control in terms of 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 who the eligible voters. And so that's the reason why. We're going with the 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 registered voting list from from the county because we know um many of those people meet the requirements to vote. Um, in elections in New York, in Saratoga County. Um, otherwise, we have no idea if we were just a blanket list, send out um ballots to households. I I have no idea if a ballot, it's hypothetically, ballot comes to my house and my daughter decides to get the mail and and fills it out and send it back. I have no idea if. If we wouldn't know if I did it, she did it, whoever else did it. So so that's why this whole thing is so complicated. And that's the reason why we're trying to, that's the reason why we we opted to go with the board of elections. So at least there's some. Quality control in terms of the names of the individuals that the ballots are being mailed out to. And then we try to do a cost reference. To make sure that those things are in sequence um as well um on the outer envelope, because we can't tell, we don't want, there'll be, there won't be any names on the ballots. Because we shouldn't know who voted what, period. We just want to know that the ballots came back and we try to do some cross references as much as possible. But there's a lot of. Um, nuances to that process as well. So the big part of it is, so when you think about the cost sequence. We have to send out a large envelope because the ballots, we're going with scannable ballots. Um, similar to when you come to the vote now, you you stick it in, scan it, it registers your vote, because otherwise. It's it's unbearable process if we had to. because otherwise, it's, it's unbearable process if we had to count, open up every envelope that we now typically do with absentee ballot, open all those envelopes, unfold them, have someone come and count them and recount, recount, and certainly, board members have been at the board meeting where we've had whatever, a couple hundred absentee ballots, and it's hours just to do those kind of going back and forth to make sure that, that there's no errors on it, that people didn't cross off, that those kind of things, versus the scannable portion of it, will, will certainly from a, from a time perspective, make the process more efficient. And so we're working with both the Saratoga County Board of Elections and Schenectady Board of Elections to do so. Kudos to those folks for willing to, to step up to the charge to, to deal with the, the executive order as currently written. So, so, so one of the things then that, that we're hoping to do, looking to do, and I say that because every day, there's a different interpretation in terms of, of, of this, is we'll send out whatever that final number is, hopefully by tomorrow, we have some sense of what's the final number of registered voters in Saratoga County that's within the Shen District. Once we have that number, we also then, with that postcard that I mentioned about before, basically saying that we, we're telling people, this is going, so the postcard would go out to every, well, it's about twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight thousand roughly, or maybe households within the district, as well as posting on our website to say, the district will be mailing absentee ballots to registered voters. If you're not a registered voter and you want, and you eligible to vote, meaning you're, you're eighteen, lived in the district for thirty days, US citizen, all those algebraic criteria, please let us know and we'll send you a ballot. And so, so we're going to try to do that as well, as much as possible, try to, with due diligence and fidelity, to try to catch as many people as we can who have a desire to vote. The big piece of it, all those ballots still have to be back in the district by five PM on June ninth. So, so, so there's an exception that's out there for, for military personnel who are serving overseas and otherwise, and we're looking at that exception a little bit closer, and we'll address that as we, we move through the process. But largely for, for most voters, it's, it's, the large majority of voters, it's five PM, June ninth, it's not, oh, I dropped it in the post office at, at five o'clock and you're going to get it on June tenth. It has to be back, physically back to us by five PM, June ninth, as we move forward. So let me stop there, see if I addressed both the questions from Mrs. Hoffman, as well as from Mr. Gilbert.
You did, thank you.
So, so again, I'm just going to quickly walk through a couple of other things. Again, we're looking at a scannable piece, and in fact, this conversation is, is what, two o'clock conversation today, trying to figure out what's the best way to do this, and quite frankly with you, we're going to be having this conversation again tomorrow. So, so hopefully, what I'm telling you today, people can still do as we, as we, we plan forward. And so, so again, this is where the ballots is by, we need to know who's going to be on the ballots, so they could be a part of that piece of it before the nineteenth. Ideally, that week of the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth is when we need to know. And then the June ninth ballots have to be in by five PM, because that's part of the law as well. So a big question still stands out is how, how do districts verify voter eligibility? And that's the reason why we're looking at the, the registered voters list from Saratoga County, so at least we know there's some, some, some credibility to, to that list in terms of people being eligible voters as we move forward. And so just, just kind of summarize to the board, this is, these are kind of, not even hot and other things, you know, potential postage, if we had to do sixty thousand, and then if we had to do two envelopes like Mr. Gilbert just mentioned. And, and just again, I, I, this, this could be high price, low price, we're still trying to get price on what, what these envelopes, because we're not talking about your mom and pop little envelope, we're talking about the big envelopes that has to fold a big scannable ballot to go in, and within that, there's an envelope and that to send it back to. So, so we're not talking about your little mom and pop envelopes that we typically send out to for our personal use, the printing of ballots, the printing of all these type things. The question is, do we have to have the board appoint voter inspectors to actually open the ballots, or can we just get a, a chairman of the election that oversees some of our staff to do so? That's a question that, that we're in the process of trying to get an answer to right now as well, because again, that would be an additional cost to, to, to bring people in, and how do we bring people in? If it's scanning, is it the person that, that, that controls the machine? Can that person scan it? Is it one machine, ten machine? Who knows? So those are big questions to be asked and answered as well. So let me kind of go back to this and pause and see if there are any questions that the board has.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay, so, so the last piece, and saving the best for last, my apology, and I, and I appreciate your indulgence for, for spending the time with these big rocks. However, it's, it's critical that as a board, certainly you appreciate, understand it, and also for our public. And this is, this is a precursor to the nineteenth, because unfortunately, we haven't had a lot of detailed numbers, conversation beyond the ones that we had initially, because we're waiting to see what's going to be the implication of state aid. And, and unfortunately, if that happens on the fourteenth or that week, and then that Tuesday, we'll be proposing, so the same night on the, on the nineteenth, when I'm proposing to the board a, a budget recommendation, I'm also going to be walking through the details of that budget recommendation to the board, many of which the board has already seen, because we had several budget development workshops prior to this whole situation going the way it's going. So, so it shouldn't be a lot of surprise, but there's certain modification that we have made in the budget as well, but it's consistent with this particular document. Here's one to quickly walk through with the board, because a lot of, again, you have seen the multi-pronged approach that, 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 that we, we take this approach with any budget development anyway, in terms of, of looking at, at, at different options. But back to, to Mr. Delalo's questions in terms of, of the, even the school reopening, it's the same North Star concept that, that, that also applies with this, you know, what's our true north, so to speak? And so, so we're looking at the balance between program preservation and where is that, 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 that point of diminishing returns? In other words, if we cut programs to a certain point, where it, where does it become, it doesn't matter, because it's useless at this point, because you've cut it too much. And so, so we're trying to find where is that point that we start eroding quality of programs to the point that it's pointless offering that program? And then the other side of the, the coin is where's that, that point where in trying to, to fill in revenue gaps because of lack of state aid, that we're now contributing to a, a major structural deficit moving forward? So it's trying to find that, that nice point, that equilibrium point, if you will, as we move forward. So, so that's the multi-pronged approach that kind of drives the thinking. And also, we then taking a multi-year approach, recognizing that, that if you look back at the last significant financial crisis that we had in the state that goes back to oh-eight, oh-nine, it took about five years, quite frankly, for us to, 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 to right-size and be back at a place where, where, where structurally, financially we are. When I say we not only Shen, but school districts across the state, I think we were very fortunate because we planned ahead, and we planned for it, and we were very careful in our planning, and we're doing those same things right now. And so we're looking at it from a, a multi-year perspective, what's going to be the next two years, the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two? And then what's going to be the three years after that, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five? And so, so for the next two years, it's going to be strategic monitoring and trimming of expenditures, again, keeping that first, that true north perspective in mind, and, and trying to make sure that we try to, 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 to fine-tune our footprint, and, and, and in a very measured way, infuse some funds to balance whatever revenue gaps coming from the state. So that's going to be our, our perspective for the next two years. And then beyond that point, we, quite frankly with you, we hope that, that as a state, as a nation globally, we're, we're finding our financial well-being and wellness again. And so then we start getting back in that, to that notion of, of how do we then much more assertively, even more aggressively for that matter, start addressing emerging needs and looking at stabilizing some of our reserve capacity that we would have diminished over the two years prior. So, so that's a multi-year perspective. Let me stop right there, see if there are any questions related to, to this particular piece.
No questions? Go ahead, please.
So, so this next graphic is, so we, so, so, so for context to the board, it's probably, we probably, who knows, fifty different files, and this is a part of a six or eight-page document to, to condense down in a graphic form, so, so that the board, the public have an appreciation of, when we start talking about strategic contingency planning, we're looking at all the pros and cons of everything that we do. And so, so, so right now, we're analyzing the current year's budget, the nineteen-twenty budget that we're in right now, trying to see how we, what we do right now is, could be beneficial to our twenty-twenty-one budget. And so, 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 so the pros is that we try to, to use some, some of our situation right now to help maximize our capacity for twenty-twenty. The, the con is that when we start looking at paring down some budgets, we reduce some flexibility moving forward for the following year out, the twenty-one, twenty-two. So we always have to assess the pros and cons for everything that we do. When we start talking about fund balance capacity, again, we're going to be looking at the end of this year, see what fund balance capacity generated to help us for next year, particularly if we have to infuse funds from fund balance or more funds from fund balance into the twenty-twenty-one budget. So how does this year capacity gives us the ability to do so, so we don't lose a lot of traction in terms of fund balance capacity moving forward to twenty-one, twenty-two? And that's the con of that side. So again, we have to always look at both sides of that proverbial coin as we move forward, as we go through much more, what I'm going to call more severe, or drastic approaches to, to these kind of things in terms of, if we have to dig deeper into fund balance capacity, into reducing debt expenditures. So one side, we reduce expenditure on one side of the equation, infuse more fund balance equation on the other side, to balance whatever funding gaps might be. And again, as those things become much more significant, while it may help us preserve program, because back to Mr. Mr. Delalo's question, we're driven by the North Star, it's preserve for quality program for, for, for our students, and Grace is on the line as a student representative. We want the experience for Grace as, as, as a senior to be as exciting, quite frankly with you, I think Grace, I think is going to have this season done, more exciting than experience for kids this year. In other words, we don't want to have a good year, bad year, because we can't have good year, bad years, because kids expect that every year, they're going to have a high-quality experience, and people who invest in our schools, our taxpayers, expect that we're going to deliver a high-quality program to our students. So, so we certainly want to keep that sequence moving forward. And so, so as we go through the scenarios, and once we know on the fourteenth, what's going to be the, the, the significant impact in down, or shortfalls of state aid, we're going to exercise these scenarios, and I use my hand to kind of levers, because they're truly levers. As we move one lever up or down, we have to figure out where is that spot without creating either structured deficit on the revenue side, or a programmatic downturn that, that the diminishing returns are so significant that it's pointless offering certain programs, which we never want to do. So, so those are kind of the pros and cons. The most extreme case, and again, we have to think about the worst-case scenario to the best-case scenario. Best-case scenario is, we, we're, we're, if we have a situation, federal dollars come in to offset the, the loss in revenues from the state, which we're still hoping that would be the case, and subsequently minimize the, the, the reduction in state aid, which then allows us to, to, to focus on more program preservation and reduction in, in tax impact. That's the best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, we don't have federal dollars infused, and the gap is way larger than anyone anticipated, and then we have to go to extreme measures. And extreme measures is, is basically tapping into reserves that's already set aside for already existing liabilities. And we certainly, I'm going to tell you, that will be the absolute last thing, and it's probably the only time I would even boast this as a, as an option to the board. There's no, there's nothing positive about doing that at all, because we will go into that knowing that we're creating huge structure deficit. What I mean by structure deficit, in other words, we do something one year, knowing that there's no way we can replicate it the next year. And so the next year, you just go into a cutting mode, cutting mode, deeper cutting mode. So, but however, we have to think about, in a worst-case scenario, do we have anything to quote-unquote, keep the minimum, back to Mr. Delalo's question, love his question, keep the minimal existence of programs? Our job is not to provide minimal existence of programs. Our job is to provide high-quality experiences for our young people so they can thrive beyond the Shen experience. And so, so this graphic kind of gives you a, a, a good phase of what we're trying to do. This is just a summary of it, again, just kind of recapping words, if you will, as we move forward. And so, so, so very strategic, very thoughtful approach that we're trying to take with the budget process, and, and, and so hopefully, you'll see this play out, not hopefully, well, you will see this play out on the nineteenth. The question is, what's going to be the magnitude in which that will play out? So let me stop this, see if there are any questions from the board. I need to mute.
Gary, you have two windows open, you need to, maybe closing one would help.
So go ahead, Mr. Presley.
Gary, did you have a question?
I did. So, so Mr. Delalo, you have two devices on in your house? You don't have a phone device on? Try it again, try it again, Mr. Delalo.
Mr. Delalo might have two tabs open.
Yeah, so it's, it's a back feed, because you, you have the, the same feed open twice. So in the intro, if there are any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address as well.
So, Dr. Robinson, you mentioned the fourteenth, that's the fourteenth of May.
The fourteenth of May is when the, the last press conference, the state said that announcement was supposed to be made in terms of what's going to be the state aid capacity for schools.
Okay. And at that point, it's locked in what the state will remove from state aid, at least for a period of time, and then we, we react to that, and then probably we review, you know, a very detailed budget, similar to what we've seen in the past. And then I, at that point, that, that is our budget, right?
That's correct. So on the nineteenth, we will lay out a very similar format that the board has seen in the past in terms of program initiatives. We'll be making, we'll be, we're going to be suggesting some staff reductions, but the staff reductions in areas that have minimal impact on, on program and, and degree that we do, when I say that, so there's two different ways. Staff reduction based upon attrition, or staff reduction based upon termination of people. We're looking at staff reduction based upon attrition with minimal impact on programs. And so the degree that we have to do that is going to be based upon the numbers that we get from the state on the fourteenth.
Yep, okay. I'm going to go mute and see if Mr. Delalo can, can speak. Let's try that.
So, Mr. Delalo, you still, I'm not sure what's going on. Can you, Mr. Delalo, can you put your comment in the chat, and maybe I could just read it from there? And also, Mr. Presley, we had one comment that came to, to the board. If you have your, I can either read it to you, or I could send it to you via email.
I was told I would get an email on it, and it's not shown up yet. Please read it.
So, here, I'm going to forward it to you, Mr. Mrs., let me send it to you right now.
Okay.
So it's sent to your, your Shen school, but again, I could read it if you want me to read it.
Please go ahead and read it, I, maybe there's a slowness on the email.
Sure. So this comment says, "My name is Mahilda Tristan. I'm a senior and will be attended United States Naval Academy for college this fall. I came to Shenandoah a few weeks into third grade from Texas. I immediately recognized that the library at Skano was a welcoming place for me to relax during such a difficult transition. After a couple of years of getting to know the library and Mrs. Kirby Laman, she was the one I wrote about in, in fifth grade when we did a project about who we looked up to most. While I've been a studious kid my whole life, I wrote about her because she taught me to love what I learned and how to find what interests me. The commonality that I find in all the wonderful Shen libraries is that all are welcome. From the honored students to the kids who need more help, to the librarians, we have, go out of their way to help each and every student and parent be successful. One of the most important things about our libraries is that we still have physical books. The feeling of getting to pick a book up off the shelf and turning the pages cannot be replaced. My whole life, these libraries have helped in no small part to improve my education development." Again, Mahilda Tristan, class of twenty-twenty, US Naval Academy, anticipated class of twenty-twenty-four, and I think her part of her is, I think comment goes to how do we preserve quality program for students as we move forward? And this is a perfect example of how do we stay true to our North Star. So thank you very, very much, Mahilda, for sharing that correspondence with the board.
Yes, thank you very much from the board as well, thank you. Do we want to try Mr. Delalo, if possible? Or is he planning to send a message?
So, not as yet.
Is that working?
Yes.
Okay. I had to log in completely again. I, at least I didn't get a third time. The question had to do with using the, the fund balance. I, I understand not using too much one year, because then you don't have any.
because then you don't have any for the next year, that sort of thing. But I'm wondering, given the fact that there may very well be some further cuts in aid in another period beyond the one we're dealing with now, are we also having to keep that in mind relative to the use of our fund balance in the initial budget?
Yes. So yes, Mr. Delalo, good question. And the answer to your question is yes. If you notice on the chart here, one of the pros that we have here is moderate use of fund balance capacity to mitigate, and I probably should underline, further reductions of state aid throughout the year. So absolutely yes, that is taken into consideration in terms of what we present initially and then what capacity that we have to deal with any uncertainties because the state has stipulated that it have four review periods. And the first one will be the May, then one June, one July, one potential August. All those beyond that point will be after the budget adoption. So we have to be positioned to deal with whatever those review periods may reveal. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's all. Mr. Presley, if there's any other question, I'd be more than happy to entertain for the board as well.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're done with superintendent's comments. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Let's move on to consent items. So can I have a motion on the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Motion.
All right, Mrs. Rajat, first. Who's second, the motion? Ms. Hoffman, all in favor for the treasurer's report?
Aye.
Okay. Any nays? No nays, it passes unanimously. Let's go to minutes. I think we can combine them. Can I get a motion on the April 7th and April 21st minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Hoffman second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any nays? No nays, this passes unanimously. So let's go to action items, business items. One of them, Dr. Robinson presented, and that's the adoption of the 2020-2021 Board of Education meeting dates. Can I have a motion on this one? Mrs. Hoffman first. Any seconds?
Second.
Second. Any comments, questions on these dates? All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have any nays? No nays, okay. Let's go to, this is a very large dollar amount, so let's go with it separately, the BOSI's installment purchase. Can I have a motion on this one?
Aye, motion.
Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Stevenson second, she raised her hand. Any comments, questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays. Let's combine three and four, approval of E-rate purchase and of the SSBA network equipment. Can I get a motion on three and four, please?
Motion.
Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Stevenson second. Any comments, questions on three and four? If not, go ahead, Mr. Delalo.
No, this is Todd, Bill. I think I have to recuse myself from an E-rate purchase.
Okay. To make it simple, let's separate three and four. Let's just say three has been brought up, we'll treat it separately. So with a recusal from Mr. Gilbert, all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, so six voted and one recusal. Let's go to the SSBA network equipment. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Any nays for SSBA network equipment?
Who was first? I didn't get who was first.
I think Mrs. Rajat and then Mrs. Stevenson second.
Got you.
Okay, let's combine five and six, some sports and healthcare supply bids on five and a contract with Adarona Cabling Security. Can I have a mission, motion on five and six?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson first, Mr. Gilbert second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, raise your hand. Any nays on five and six? If not, it was passed. Let's go to number seven, scholarship and local grant donations. Can I have a motion on this one?
Motion with gratitude.
With gratitude from Mrs. Rajat. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Hoffman. Any comments, questions? All in favor on this one? Say aye. If not, any nays? No nays, that passes unanimously. And then let's go to number eight, adoption of revised budget notice. Can I have a motion on this one?
Yes.
A motion.
Mrs. Stevenson first, Mr. Gilbert second. Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? We have no nays, okay, it passes unanimously. Let's move on to special education placements and Mrs. Mylod.
If there are questions from Mrs. Mylod, she'd be ready to answer those.
Okay. No questions. So can I have a motion on acceptance of special education placements? Mrs. Rajat first, Mrs. Hoffman second. Any comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have any nays? No nays, motion passes unanimously. If we could scroll down, please, to the next one, which is instruction and temporary amendment of grading and calculation of final grades memo. Can I have a motion on this one?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoffman first, Mr. Gilbert second. Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Do you have any nays? No nays, motion passes. Let's go to staffing recommendations. Mrs. Bush.
Again, Mrs. Bush is available if there are questions from the board.
Can I have a motion on staffing recommendations? Mrs. Hoffman first, Mr. Rajat second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any nays? No nays. And then we have policies and procedures, second reading. Time, if folks want to ask questions on these second readings, these are ones presented a month ago. So can I have a motion to accept second reading policies? Mrs. Hoffman first.
A motion, it's Augusta.
Mrs. Miller second. Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Do we have any nays? No nays, motion carries. Okay. So we're done with business. Let's see if there are any other public comments.
No, we did not receive any other comments.
Okay.
Hold on, me just, I'm sorry, my apology. There's one. Let me just get back to that for one second. Mrs. Diffisiani.
Yeah.
You said there was a second public comment?
No, that's the same one.
Okay, my apology, Mr. Presley. There was only one public comment.
Okay, no, due diligence, important there. Thank you. Any other board members want to provide any comments at the end of the meeting? If not, just wanted to continue. The policy will be discussed. I think there's a scheduled meeting a week from this Wednesday. And we will continue per the schedule we have out there on the web. And I think that's it. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, is it possible just to officially announce my run for reelection for the board?
Absolutely. Go ahead, you have the floor to make your announcement.
I just would like to acknowledge that these past two years on the board have been rewarding, to say the least. I've really enjoyed working with my board colleagues. We all bring such different strengths to the table and together we make a solid team. This position's been a great fit for me, especially given my background in mental health and being able to understand both simple and multilayered issues to best advocate for the families of this community. During my term, people have reached out and I have gotten to know so many and it's been my pleasure to have represented them. I am proud to be part of the policymaking, budget review process and ever-changing mental health standards we put in place for our district. It's exciting to be part of the evolving world of education, even remote education, where the student voice matters and Shen is at the top of their game. I'm honored to be part of such an innovative community of students, administrators, educators, and parents, and I'm seeking reelection to be right back here at this table doing all the great work we do. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comments.
I should probably do the same. I wasn't prepared to tonight, but I would like to officially also announce my intentions to run for my second term, my second three-year term on this board. I take this work very seriously. It's been a very busy three years. I serve on many committees, committees that use my strengths, which is my finance and accounting background and compliance background. And by serving on these committees, it's helped me to get to know the administrators, the teachers, the students so much better. I've been in this community for 26 years and actually, my, it's, I feel, even though I'm not from this area, I feel very much part of the Shenandoah, the greater community, the municipalities that it serves. My children have spent their entire educational career here and they've received a great education. And I feel this is also a way of paying it forward. This is why I continue to serve on this board. This is why I stepped up and will be serving on the BOSI's board. This fits, this is, it's a good time in my life, I feel, to be serving in this way. I have this opportunity in my career so that I can dedicate more time to this district. And so I want to keep doing what I'm doing and I'm, I would be very honored to have, to be able to serve a second term in the Shenandoah Central School District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from board members?
Bob?
Go ahead.
I have a request. It's probably a request that doesn't really need to be made. It's probably something that Dr. Robinson would do anyway. But I just wanted to, you know, say this. I've seen, as a consequence of really paying close attention, I've seen the tremendous work that the district has been doing in preparation for opening again. As a consequence of being on the BOSI's board, I've also seen what they've done. And it's tremendous work. But for the average citizen, I think it's a black box. And so although we talk in generalities, ultimately, people are going to be affected in a very real way. And so my request is that we share with the people as soon as we know, as much as we know, so that they can wrap their heads around this whole thing because there could very well be significant changes coming down the pike. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Dr. Robinson, anything you'd like to mention on that, respond on that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Delalo. And ironically, one of the things that we spoke about today on our regional call is, is how do we public schools start to really talk about the things that we're doing from an instructional standpoint now and into the coming weeks, as well as all the efforts that you just outlined there as well. So you're absolutely right. We had a point now where we have to, to, as I use the word pivot, our business model, we also have to pivot our communications because people are going to start making assumptions and we don't want people to make assumptions. We want people based upon the realities. And so I'll give you a good example. Mrs. Hoffman alluded to it in one of her comments, that there's an abundance of chatter on Facebook about graduation, about this, about that. And while people may want to know right now, the last thing we could do is be more premature, giving people information that we're not ready to execute. But I can tell you that we will have something special for our graduates to signify the culmination of 13-years' journey. And I say that because people want to know exactly what we're going to do. However, there's so many other factors that play that we have to consider, all those factors. And as soon as we know that we can feasibly do those things, we certainly want to outline. So yes, Mr. Delalo, absolutely. And we recognize that we may have to also outline things in phases. Phase one is this, phase two is this, as we move forward. So more information to come, but we certainly want the public, and it's part of the reason why I spent the time tonight, to know that there are a lot of folks and the board that's committed to ensure that the experience for our kids in this time is preserved as much as we possibly can. And experience is not only the academic experiences, all those things. Principals are planning spring festivities, some of the things that typically happen in the spring, trying to do those things remote. The board was aware that the high school awards, we're going to do those things remote. Mr. Augusta known as meeting with students, student leaders on a regular basis to get their input to plan some of these student-oriented things. Mr. Colan, meeting with student athletes, same kind of thing, as spring sports council, to try to figure out how do we empower, keep people online. So a long answer to your question, but I think it's absolutely important that the public knows that we're doing these things and it's not a black box, that we have a lot of people thinking and planning to execute a lot of things for our students.
Thank you.
Mrs. Stevens had a question.
No, just a thought, Dr. Robinson, you know, as much as I think it's, we have to plan, we have to, I'm listening to the realism of this conversation. However, in 60-some-odd days from March 1st until now, May 5th, things that we didn't think we could possibly do, we've done. Projections that have been out there didn't meet the expectation that were there. I mean, this comes down to common sense, a lot of it. And I just, and there are some aspects that you don't want to push a panic button at the same time. So I know people may be listening tonight and I don't want them to push the panic button. We will get through this. We will be better off for it. There will be plenty of opportunity here. So I try to look toward the positive and look toward the light every day. I know it seems like Groundhog Day, but I think what I'm trying to say is here, you know, we're not going off the edge. Everything's going, you know, it'll work out. It's going to be a little, it might hurt a little bit in the beginning, but I guess my thing is, I don't like to push the panic button when we don't have to, so.
Agreed. That's why we spend time planning so we know we can execute with the best results in mind. So thank you, Mrs. Stevens. That's it for me, Mr. Presley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Mr. Gilbert first, Mrs. Stevens in second. All in favor? Raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone.
All right, good night.
Good night.